All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming down tonight. I will call our meeting to order at six o'clock tonight on the nose. Our monthly meeting, one of two this week, actually. So I guess a whole monthly meeting for the Amherst School Board. Pack house tonight. So we will right away get to public comment. If anybody has any public comment, please come up to that chair right there, have a seat, say your name and where you're from, what town you live in, and you'll have three minutes to address everybody. Once, twice, oh, big crowd and no one wants to say anything. Jackpot day, so. All right, we will move to our next agenda item, and this is why the big crowd is here today. It is our culture club at Clark Wilkins. And Anna, am I turning it over to you or am I going to introduce somebody from the club? I should have asked that before, and I apologize. Please do.
All right, we are, we are excited to be able to bring to you one of our committees at school. When I started two years ago now, three years ago, one of the things that I did is I talked to every single staff member, and we talked about what was the number one thing that people wanted to take a look at as a goal for the school. And every single staff member said, we would really like to take a look at and improve school culture. So out of that initial conversation with about 130 staff members was the impetus for us to be able to start the culture club. I didn't, we came with song and dance and whatever, so we're going to save a little bit. But tonight, it really, I would like to turn it over to the committee, has been going strong with about 20 staff members from both Clark and Wilkins over the last two and a half years. So I'm going to turn it over to them now.
Can I stand? All right. So with Anna saying about song, I just cannot not start with a little culture club. Thank you for having us this evening. It's so nice to see you all in real life and not through Facebook. It's been nice to see you all. You've had a pretty rough year and your job, so it's nice to be here and to share some of the joy that is going on in our building and something that we are collectively really proud of. As Anna said, Clark Wilkins wanted culture. We wanted a tighter culture. We were great in grade levels and isolation, but we were going for a common goal and common language. And when asked what we wanted, you think we would have said square footage, better ventilation? But we hit the head with culture and being a family and really striving to come together. This committee is made up, as Anna said, over 20 members across both buildings and grade levels. And it's a lot of fun when we get together, a lot of laughs, but we also put together and make some great initiatives and change in our buildings that we're really proud to highlight with you this evening. We started as the goal of improving the culture for children and for staff, and it was really building based. And then hello COVID took us and really turned us around that we had to branch out beyond anything that we were ever prepared for. There was no college class. There was no roadmap or book on how to teach through COVID. Never mind how to keep your mental health and culture club really became an important part for our staff, for each other. We really thought about what did we need from each other and got creative. There's flamingos involved in this. We started celebrating the little things like birthdays and birthday buddies. And then on the other end of it, coming out of COVID, that we had to look at, how are we going to bridge this new world that we're in? We had staff that was home for a year, the people that were in person, and even though we were in person, we were alone. It was isolating. So how do we bridge that back together again and find some joy? And I could not, we are so excited to share the joy that Clark Wilkins is rocking this year and how excited we are to share that with you tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to some of my other members to highlight some of those awesome things we're doing.
Thank you. So Hootie's new look was created by a dear friend of mine, and she was able to create a school mascot that is student friendly and relatable. Hootie is certainly one of a kind. Over this, over the years, he has been named and has been the staple of our positive school community. Within that community, we have established owl expectations that follow us throughout the entire building. These expectations are the foundation of our classroom rules, and they also help support students using adults to help model that expectation throughout the entire day. Hootie shout outs and Hootie stickers have also been created to allow students and teachers to recognize that owl behavior. And lastly, students have encouraged, been encouraged to take on leadership roles throughout the school through principal council, Hooties Community Council, and recess rangers. These structures have positively transformed our school atmosphere for not only students, but for the adults and staff members as well.
So with that being said, we would like to give a Hootie shout out to Anna Perel for creating Culture Club and putting positive culture as a top priority for us. Like to give Hootie stickers to all the school board members for being so kind for having us here today.
So putting our students first is always in the forefront of everything we do. That is what we strive for every day. We strive for excellence in teaching, also to make them happy socially, emotionally, and to recognize their accomplishments. So once we felt like we had a good program going with the Hootie shout outs and recognizing owl behavior, we decided that maybe we need to extend it also to the staff because whether you're five or 55, who doesn't like a good shout out once in a while? So we decided that we would brainstorm a way to recognize all of our staff. And so after a few conversations, we thought, how fun would it be for them to come home and be surprised by 12 flamingos in their yard with a sign that says, you've been flocked. Thank you from your flock at Clark Wilkins. We appreciate all you do. And so we decided, well, what should we start with retirees or the newbies? And then, of course, we got really excited and decided, let's just do everybody. And it was the mid-April when we decided this, so we're about 90% done. We're not finished yet. We still have some flocking to do, and we have some new people. So if you are watching this and you have not yet been flocked, look out because we are coming for you. So we would have teams who would flock early in the morning or at night or on the weekends or in the summer. And so I just want to recognize all the teams that flock because they did this on their own time. And just a personal story, Saturday night, date night, instead of having dinner, was flocking with my husband. Where are we going for dinner? And I'd say, oh, Merrimack. Oh, what restaurant? Well, no, we're going to go flock. It really did take that a life of its own, but people were so excited. And every time they were flock, they were surprised to get up in the morning and saw this flock in their front yard, and people were actually waiting to be blocked. And there were pictures of all of the people that were flocked. So like I said, we're still doing it, and I think it's just a way for us, you know, just to bring a little positive to all the people who work so hard for our district. So we still have more to do and stay tuned. And we actually have two new members that are here right now. We're always taking new members.
Oh, okay, it's back to me. So our positive culture, as I said, we took the challenge of coming back in person and remote. And we were thinking of, there's, we have our curriculum, we have all of these things, but at our core was the relationships and our staff and coming back with a positive outlook for this year. So the Culture Club decided on a carnival theme, and we brought together games. We had so many laughs. We still were able to cover all of the things that we needed, but we had such a fun atmosphere that day. It was, the energy is just outstanding. I wish I could bottle it up, and it was just such a good way to come back and be like, we've got this, we're ready. On that day. To radiate our positivity and to come back into this positive school year. And then the next, sorry, is this photo. So I'm notorious for taking a photo on the first day at school at the SAU. If you remember as a child before Christmas Eve, Christmas Eve, that energy, that magic, or Hanukkah, whatever you celebrate, that magic. This day is my favorite day. And if this photo, we felt passionately on Culture Club, we needed a family photo. We have Clark, we have Wilkins on School Picture Day, but you actually very rarely get us all in the same place collectively, all 130 of us. So we got together for this photo, and we have enlarged it and hung it on the bulletin board of Wilkins. And when you walk in every single day and you look at this photo, I ask you to take a look at it. It is the best photo of every staff member in our building. We are radiating joy. We have the hope for this year and what we're going to do. And we hung it on the bulletin boards. Every day when we walk in, we set the intention of, we are here for the kids. We are excited and we are owls. We are a family and we've got this. So zoom in and take a look that we're ready to take on this challenge. We're happy to be a part of this, we enjoy. We are the good kind of infectious this year. Thanks for letting us come tonight.
I just wanted to add that the PTA was also part of this, and they sponsored the food that we had for the picnic. I also want to thank Anna for making it mandatory. Is that really, people want to stay in the classrooms, but I'll take it.
I also just want to throw it out there that like I'm a new, like hired to the district this year, and like the first thing that I saw when I got on Slack was like, hey, we have this thing called Culture Club. I was like, okay, cool. And one of the most important things to me about finding a new school for me was like making sure the culture was great and that it felt like a family, and it truly has like, everybody's taking me in like family on this committee, and it's amazing.
Do you have any questions for us?
I was going to do that. You jumped the gun for me. Questions or comments?
First off, thank you so much. We are excited to have teachers and hopefully students at future meetings. It gives us so much energy and reminds us why we do what we do. And so thank you for coming out because I know that you've already been working hard all day. It's been a long day. Thank you for letting us, like we get to see all of, all of the really like policies on our agenda tonight. So it's really important stuff that we do, but it's so much fun to see that because we do that important stuff, you get to do all of this that keeps things alive for our students. And I'm so glad that you're taking care of each other and that you've made that part of your culture because I think it's so, so important. And by the way, OSHA State Job Lot has ugly Christmas sweaters with flamingos right now. I was perhaps talked into one yesterday. So, no, this is fantastic. Is there any way that we can support what you're doing or just you were here to give us a little, a little jot of joy? Yeah, yeah. I mean, we would, we would love to come help serve at something or do something or just show our support for all of you too. Because I think that we've all been so disconnected from each other, right? And, you know, through best of intentions. And so now that we can kind of be in the same room again, we And so now that we can kind of be in the same room again, we would love to come do something to support what you're doing. Okay, I can't speak for everybody. I would love.
You can speak for me, Terry.
And Beth would love, and maybe the guys too. I don't know. We'll see. And I'm sure Victoria, I could sort of speak for her because I know her well, and she would do this too, but yeah.
Can we give you some Hootie stickers and some shout outs? And feel free to build them up and send them to the schools and show the teachers.
Oh, that would be great. I know, I immediately put mine, so I have it with me. I was over here plotting on how to get one before. It really did. So thank you so much. Oh, oh, my, my husband will be thrilled to know he's not the only one who gets the surprise of guess what we're doing tonight. All right, thank you.
Before we, before we let you go, I do want to just check in with Victoria. Victoria was not able to make it to the meeting tonight. So Victoria, first off, I need to make sure that you can confirm that you are alone. Although you don't have to be, but you need to confirm that it was impractical for you to be here tonight.
Yes, it's not acceptable for me to be there tonight.
Perfect. So now, would you like to ask any questions or make any comments to the Culture Club?
I would like to tell you all that I really appreciated your presentation, and I would like one of those stickers. So I will come by Clark Wilkins sometime and pick one up. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Sorry, Josh had something.
Yeah, sorry. So I just wanted to say I did get a chance to see the opening Carnival Day. There was really great energy on that day despite all the cheating Anna did at the Carnival Games. And I just also want to say, we spend a lot of time as a board talking about the quantifiable, measurable stuff, the tests, the NWA stuff. But there is also important growth, growth in the unquantifiable stuff, which is what you guys are doing. So that's extremely important. We had, I think, what, one-third of the fourth grade class sign up to try and do Principal's Council and basically volunteer to, you know, give up recesses to make their school a better place. And that is an exemplary thing to have happening in our school. So thank you for all you are doing, and it is very important work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the work you guys are doing. And I can certainly speak to anybody that's worked in the private industry in the last five or 10 years. Culture has become a big part of kind of a buzzword around people getting hired, people staying at a company. So to have that mentality here, I think it makes it easier for Bethany and Anna to know that it's one reason why people may not leave at the end of the year. So I think it certainly serves a lot of benefits, especially for continuity. So thank you very much for all you guys have done.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the time. Thank you, thank you.
So with that, we will actually move and take a pause in our agenda before we get to our consent agenda, and we will get to something that is not on here, but certainly something that is important for us. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So three years ago, Ms. Anna Perrell became Principal of Clark Wilkins Elementary School. She came to us from the Salem School District, and this is her 28th year of being a building level administrator in New Hampshire, which is a remarkable feat, particularly given the challenges that come with being a school educator. And so I've been very proud of Anna's leadership. And it's fitting that tonight we heard about the culture at Clark Wilkins because one of the biggest impacts Anna Perrell has had on our school is the positive culture that she has brought. And within weeks of being principal, the culture at Clark Wilkins literally changed. And I remember beach chairs and a staff meeting that happened outside that was a beach theme within the first few weeks of school, and I realized something is different about Clark Wilkins now. Over these past three years, Anna's leadership has helped Clark Wilkins become a shining star in our community. Just last week, there was an ice cream social that was incredibly well-attended and required the same as Perrell to, I think, scoot out and try to obtain additional ice cream at the last minute because of how many people showed up at the school. The school has, now has a mascot it didn't have in the past. What is that mascot? For that. And so Hootie is now the mascot. Hootie has ridden the bus on a number of occasions with students. There is now a Principal's Leadership Council at the school that is well-represented, well-represented and well-attended by members of the, of the school community. And so it is with some sadness that I announced tonight that this year will be the last year Anna Perrell will serve as Principal of the Clark Wilkins Elementary School. But hang with me for a bit. I have a couple more announcements to go along with that announcement. Kathleen Murphy. Kathleen Murphy has been the Assistant Principal. This is her fifth year at the Clark Wilkins School. Through some changes in leadership, through some changes in our culture and our time, and Kathleen has shined during all of that. If you spend time with Kathleen Murphy, you quickly understand how intelligent she is, how much knowledge and wisdom she brings to school in the areas of curriculum, instruction, and assessment. The only area where Kathleen outshines her knowledge and wisdom is in the strength of her character as a leader and as a person. And so I am very proud this evening to announce that I'll be nominating Kathleen to be the next Principal of Clark Wilkins Elementary School as of next July. And as Steve Jobs would say, there's one more thing. So Ms. Anna Perrell has agreed to remain on next July 1st and remain as Assistant Principal at Clark Wilkins. Anna and I have had several conversations over the past number of years and certainly over the, over the last year. And then we've incorporated into those conversations Kathleen. And I have to say, I think this is the perfect plan for lots of reasons. Not every principal and assistant principal can pull off the great, the great switcheroo. But these two already work hand in, hand in glove and are a perfect match and a perfect partnership. And so in many ways, this will be a seamless and flawless transition because of the way Anna and Kathleen complement each other's skill set and complement each other's personalities as well. And so I'm, I'm very excited and feel completely comfortable with this as a transition plan for the, the leadership at Clark Wilkins Elementary School. And so it's my great honor this evening to place into nomination Ms. Kathleen Murphy as Principal of Clark Wilkins Elementary School and Anna Perrell as Assistant Principal at Clark Wilkins Elementary School effective July 1, 2022. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Adam. And thank you to Anna and Kathleen for both being here tonight. We do have to make this official, so I will take as the Chair of the Board, a nomination to have Kathleen Murphy take over as Principal and then Anna Perrell to serve as Assistant Principal starting July 1st of 2022.
I will second that motion.
I have a second as well. So does anybody have any discussion points or comments they would like to make?
I just want to thank both ladies for being willing to kind of think outside the box and find a way to keep you both and find a way that it can still work with your lives and your goals. And so thank you, because I know it was a little bit unusual. And when we first had the idea introduced, we said, really? Okay. Are you sure they're good? Yeah, yeah, they're, they're good with it. They're good with it. And, and I just think it's, it's going to be a really wonderful thing for our school and, and hopefully for both of you. And so thank you.
I just want to thank both of you for being members of our school community or members of our town community. You guys have made Clark Wilkins an amazing place. It has changed so much in the last few years since you've both been there. And I am so excited, Kathleen, for you to see you grow into this position. It's, I'm so happy.
Are you crying?
I am. For so many reasons, but I'm also, Anna, I am so thankful that you decided to stay on because the idea of losing you is not easy. So I'm very thankful that you decided to stay on for a little bit longer for us. Thank you.
How do you feel about that lifetime contract now? So with that, I will, we'll take a roll call vote. Victoria, we'll start with you.
Victoria, yes.
Bean, yes.
Conklin, yes.
Kuzma, yes.
And Gothier, yes. So that is a unanimous 5-0. Carol, I will turn it over to you.
Absolutely. Thank you guys very much. So I'll, I'll still give the same analogy because I didn't prepare two thoughts for this evening. So, you know, just the excitement and passion to still work at Clark Wilkins. Kathleen is just such a great teammate for me, as Adam said. So I am still have the excitement and passion as day one, but I'm going to let her be Bill Belichick, and I am going to be calling the offensive plays from the sidelines. So I know nobody watched the football game last night. And again, for me to have the ability to watch Kathleen grow, she's just such an amazing leader and individual, so beyond in good hands. And I almost said from day one, I'm like, you could have hired her, you know? So I'm just so excited to still continue to be a part of this team.
Wow, hi, everyone. I just really want to thank the board and the district for all the support over the last five years being here. I am so excited to step in this role and truly honored that you have made this nomination tonight and have, I have your support as we make this change. I feel very lucky to work with all of the students and the staff at Clark Wilkins. You could hear from our Culture Club tonight, it is an amazing place, and I am so grateful that I get to be a small part of it. So I'm excited to continue our work together, to continue this work as a member of the leadership team and then serve my community. I am just overwhelmed with joy as I think about this new role. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now we can shake off all the lovey-dovey stuff. Now we can get down to the brass tacks of our night. So we'll move on to our consent agenda. If I can, there goes our audience. Yes, exactly. So if I can get a motion to accept the consent agenda as it is, items 1 through 14 tonight.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion from Beth. Can I get a second? Terry has a second. Any points of discussion, any points of conversation that we have with the consent agenda tonight? Beth, either hand raised first.
Let Josh go first. My question was for Anna, and she just walked out of there.
A couple of things. I'll, I'll start with one. I'll start at four, where my first one is the unanticipated revenue of $2,100 from the PTA. Thank you to the PTA and for Katie Fantasia for running the Readathon and raising that money. There's more Hootie Who's going out in the hallway. And also a quick note for those that are watching at home. Boosterthon has started up. As my fourth grader reminded me tonight that we need to sign up. So get your Boosterthon signups done and going. And hopefully, if we raise enough money, if we raise 50, 50K, Anna will kiss a pig. So I know we all want to see that. So make sure that we get out there and raise that money.
Is Anna aware of this deal?
She is aware, yes. No, she's aware. She's aware.
If you haven't seen it. She is committed on, on video. I believe they're putting lipstick on it before she kisses it. I think that is the plan.
Victoria, do you have any points you'd like to bring up on the consent agenda?
I do.
I'm going to cut you off for one second. If you have a question for Adam or Anna, we have a hold on that, so you'll have to put those aside for just a minute because they've gone out of the room. But if it's something for Bethany or somebody else, we can, we can cover those right now.
How about I ask Bethany a question? When we talk about lunch, and I noticed in your report, you discuss the bees. Can you give a little more color to that for anybody listening at home?
Sure, yeah. So we didn't have this problem last year, but this year, the bees have decided that they enjoy our students' lunches perhaps more than they even do. So we had JP Pest come out. We also had a local beekeeper come out. The bees have been identified as largely being honeybees. So they apparently can travel up to two miles looking for food. They've identified the maple syrup with those French toast sticks as being an ideal source. So we asked a beekeeper to come out. He offered to move the hive for us if we could find it, but we can't find a hive on premises. So for the short term, we've moved lunches indoors, and the weather's been not cooperative anyway. So we've moved lunch indoors for the short term, hoping that that helps the bees relocate to another area to find food and are keeping an eye on that before we, we set up back with those outdoor lunches. But JP Pest came out, and unfortunately, there's nothing, there's no mitigation factor they can do to remove the bees for us. So we're kind of in a holding pattern with that, but with the cooler nights, we're hopeful that that will, that will encourage them to go into hibernation. So we'll be back outside for lunch soon.
And Victoria, before you continue, I did have a lunch point as well. Can we continue to have, I noticed that the numbers of lunches that have been requested this year is more or less fourfold over what it's been the last couple of years, mainly because the federal government has provided the free lunch program, continued that through this year. Can you continue to keep us updated on how that's going and how we're mitigating that? I know that in both reports, there are some longer waits some days, but I know with a longer lunch, it's probably eased a little bit. But that may not certainly always be the case. If you can just keep us posted on that monthly until that becomes less of an issue or staffing increases, whatever the case may be. That would be.
Certainly, certainly. And it's, it's, it's lunches, but it's also, we're serving an astronomical number of school breakfasts as well. So, yeah.
Victoria, you can continue. Adam and Anna are back.
Perfect. So this is kind of a threefold question. When we look at the organizational charts, there are a few categories that I don't have as much information about. And I assume that, that not everybody on the board or on Ways and Means will have as much information about. In the past few years, Ways and Means has had an in-depth discussion about the para positions. And my question is not saying we don't need parrots. I want everybody in the room to know that. My question is just understanding more what the roles are. So I know when I looked at the different numbers, different programs have, you know, higher numbers and things like that that don't seem to be broken out in the same way that some of the other organizational numbers are. I don't even necessarily need a number tonight, but maybe we could give some color to that in the future? Thanks.
Anybody else for consent agenda items? I know Beth had a couple of questions.
Anna, looking at the enrollment for Clark Wilkins, we had two grades that had significant drops from August to September. Do we have any idea why?
So at the time, we did it in August, all of the people that had moved out were not taken off of Power School. So at that moment, so from the time school had ended, those had not reconciled. So this is more of the accurate.
Okay, thank you.
I had that same question, so I could skip it. But I wanted to know a little bit about the after-school. First, I wanted to thank the, the teachers and the parrots who have stepped up to help fill in some needs until the Y program takes over. And how is that going? Are we ready to go next week? Feeling good about it?
We're, we're feeling good about it. So first, I would like to thank the, the teachers that stepped up, that organized it, like extremely organized for different sections that the kids rotate through every single night. We had, I think, 17 staff members in all over the three and a half weeks. We've met with the Y. The Y came out and did a site visit last week. We'll do late start on the 12th, and they're ready to go in the afternoon on the 12th. So we've met multiple times with the Y. So feeling good about everything.
Can you maybe get us the names of those 17 staff so we could write some Hootie shout outs?
Hootie shout outs. Yes, absolutely. Brendan Holt, Megan Merle, and Brittany Doyle were the ones that stepped up and kind of took over the leadership piece. But people have been working different shifts throughout the three and a half weeks, but yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Victoria, Josh, go ahead.
Hold on, we're getting there. Okay. So first, I'll begin with a Hootie Who to Victoria Boothroyd, who is top six right now for Teacher of the Year in New Hampshire and was busy scooping ice cream the other day at the ice cream social. So Hootie Who to her, and then I had a question. This is probably for Christine, I'm guessing. But there's a talk of a new core resource for math, but it's never actually revealed what that is. Are you able to talk more about that and what it actually is? Or maybe it's Anna, I don't know, but there's a new core resource.
Yeah, we are, and we had shared this information last year that we're looking at, beginning to look at math. And in doing so, our, our biggest need was new resources in kindergarten through fifth grade. This would have been the 10th year of our math textbooks. The life of a math textbook is typically about five years. So we were long overdue for a new resource in math. We looked at a number of different resources and then brought a group of teachers together at the end of last year. We deeply examined three sets of resources, and they recommended two. We deeply examined three sets of resources and they recommended two to move forward to pilot this year. So our teachers are using Bridges Math for the first half of the school year. So we looked at their resources and aligned those units that they have to our curriculum. And then we're utilizing illustrative math for the second half of the school year. So it is, and actually, almost every single kindergarten through fifth grade teacher, well, every teacher in Amherst, nearly every teacher in Montverden stepped forward and wanted to pilot. So we have strong participation and also shows that teachers were ready for a new resource. So we're utilizing Bridges the first half of the year and illustrative math the second half.
Any further questions? Terry?
There one more. I would like to hear a little bit from Bethany about the AMS Eagle Challenge.
So we all know the influence of social media on our teams. And so AMS decided to flip things on its head a little bit. So we have a really active SEL group who's coming up with all kinds of activities over the course of this year to really promote social emotional learning in our schools so that it becomes something that we simply do and it's who we are rather than it being a programmatic piece. So unfortunately, we had some damage done to school bathrooms and we decided to put out a challenge to our kids because so many of them were upset that this was happening and said, well, how can this be happening in our community? So we put out the great AMS Eagle Challenge. And what we're asking of students is really to think about how through their day, they're building community. And the point is that community building, positive community building is a million little acts that take no more than a moment of your time, but collectively are incredibly powerful. So every morning in Launchpad or morning meeting, one of our announcements asks, asks our students, what did you do yesterday to help build community? And so students go around and share. And when they share their active community building, they each get a glass pebble. And then we have containers in the lobby for each grade level where they get to deposit their pebbles throughout the day. So we'll have some fun rewards as grade levels start to fill those up. They're more than halfway filled right now. I'll tell you, sneak peek, right now, seventh grade is in the lead. So they're really excited about it and, and just incredible, incredible energy in the school. And then there's a bonus challenge. We had a community member donate some gift cards to the school and said, you know, hand these out to teachers as you see the need over the course of the year. And didn't want to share anymore, didn't want to be acknowledged, just said, use these. So as an entire Launchpad and entire morning meeting group completes a challenge. So if everyone participates for that day, what we've been able to do is give it a pay it forward challenge. So we've handed them a gift card and said, this is for you to continue building community in our school, pay it forward. So I have groups right now that are planning to do buy pizza and do dinner for custodians. I have groups that are planning to paint signs around the school. I have others that are planning on buying flowers or delivering, delivering special prizes to different teachers in the building that they just want to acknowledge and give a lift up. And one Launchpad today said, you know what, we need a jar in the lobby for teachers. So there's one for every grade level. They want a jar so that they can acknowledge the kind community building things their teachers are doing. So we're in the process of getting that going to where students will be able to, we'll put some supplies there and students will be able to drop notes into that jar that then will end the back out to their teacher. So it's been really, really great. And then our culminating activity is that our coming late start, we have a grade band assembly. I won't give away too many, too many of the details, but it's really all around our community expectations of soar and community building and recognizing what success looks like in lots of different forms. And really just, we're planning music, we're planning mascots and just really getting everybody pumped up to be part of a positive school culture.
Thank you so much.
Great, anything else? Okay. I have a roll call vote, Victoria will, oh, Victoria has her hand up. Go ahead, Victoria.
I'm sorry, guys. Bethany, I love everything you just said. School board question for Adam or Ms. Facy. Is there a certain amount of financial impact of the destruction that we've seen? I think that some in our community are wondering how things are going to be rectified, if bathrooms are fully open, things like that.
Yeah, I'm not aware there being significant financial impact, but Bethany, do you have any further information?
So we have been able to identify some of the students who've made some poor choices and are working with their families to do some restitution on materials or anything that's been destroyed. So we are working on that. It's not a significant financial impact, but we're trying to make sure that, that it comes full circle.
So I will call a roll call vote, Victoria will start with you.
For ECS.
Beams.
Conklin, yes.
Kuzma, yes.
Gauthier, yes. Will we pass the consent agenda? I will turn it over to Superintendent Steele for his report tonight.
Thank you. Nothing of significance this evening. The biggest, most important thing was what we did earlier with our nomination of a new principal and assistant principal. But with that, several parents have had questions and issues with some things that we've addressed quite a few times with public communications, namely bus transportation and our after-school care at Clark Wilkins. I believe the after-school care issue has been resolved as of next week. Bus transportation remains elusive and ever-changing target. But I held a webinar with our community just before this school board meeting and worked through some of the community's issues and questions. We remain on top of bus transportation issues. We are able to track every bus through GPS technology and we're keeping track down to the second day arrived at our schools. Amy Facy is taking the lead on that work when she's not engaged fully in budget prep. And we're all helping out with bus transportation right now to get it right. There remains an issue of lack of drivers and unanticipated or unexpected callouts resulting in a cascade effect. We're notifying families as soon as we find out about issues. Our goal is to notify families within minutes of discovering those concerns and it will continue to get better. We will have some changes to bus routes that we're going to put into effect next week that we'll be announcing later this week and should resolve any of the remaining issues that we may have. That's it for my superintendent's report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So now, our last item on the docket for tonight, certainly our last, it's our last business item on the docket for tonight, is the one we've all been waiting for. It is October, that means it is officially budget season. And so we will get our first look at the budget tonight. I will turn it over to our business administrator, Amy Facy, who gets to present this on the other side for the first time.
Yes, thank you. So welcome. Yes, I'm here to present the FY23 budget for the Amherst School District. So major stories this year, we continue to work to maintain target class sizes within the ranges set by the board. This budget reflects the requirements associated with meeting the needs of our special needs students. And there's an additional emphasis on promoting a healthy school environment through both our physical facilities as well as the social, emotional and health of our school community. So this next slide is familiar to all of you, the enrollment and class size targets. Clark Wilkins, we're projecting eleven more students for next year. The staffing approach is to roll the current number of teachers per grade forward to the next grade level. So for example, grade two has six teachers this year and there are six teachers designated to grade three for next year. We're currently anticipating 127 kindergarten students. And if that number holds true, we will need seven teachers. This budget includes that additional teacher. However, if kindergarten enrollment trends lower, the additional teacher will not be hired. At AMS, we currently have a mini-team of two teachers who teach one section of fifth grade and one section of sixth grade and are planning to keep this model for next year. While we're projecting a minimum class size target for fifth grade, removing a teacher bumps class size to over the targeted goal. Also, removing a fifth grade teacher would mean one less sixth grade teacher would be without a team and would need to teach all four content areas, which is not academically appropriate for sixth grade. By keeping both teachers at AMS, we can continue with our model. So bottom line, we're looking to add one teacher to the Amherst School District next year. So this slide provides an overview of the current FY22 budget, the FY23 default calculation and the proposed FY23 budget that is being presented tonight. We'll dive more deeply into these numbers in the presentation, but just wanted to provide you with a visual. As you most know, the default calculation is simply the appropriations contained in the FY22 budget, reduced or increased by debt service, contracts, one-time expenditures and other obligations previously incurred or mandated by law. In this calculation, there were additions for contractually obligated special services costs, employee benefits and salaries, as well as other miscellaneous costs. Productions include the special warrant article for capital reserve fund, reduction in debt service at AMS, removal of one-time purchases in FY22. And the difference between the FY22 budget and the FY23 default calculation is $273, $273,007. Of note in the default calculation are special service costs due to out-of-district placement and associated transportation costs, as well as additional paraprofessionals for new students. While there have been significant programming changes that have allowed many special education students to stay in-house, this is not always possible. Salary increases associated with the AEA contract are not included in this default budget as we are currently negotiating a new contract that is set to expire at the end of this fiscal year. Benefits for all employees are included with health estimated at a 10% increase, dental at 4% and New Hampshire retirement contribution rates for teachers and non-teachers are in year two with no increase from last year. The default calculation to propose budget is a difference of $700,874 for a total increase of 2.3%. Major drivers for this difference are salaries and benefits and technology. Technology requests include software infrastructure, purchase and replacement of laptop, purchase and replacement of wireless projectors as well. The FY23 budget presented tonight is a total of $31,903,745, which represents a total increase in $1,473,882 over the FY22 budget or a 4% increase. This slide provides a comparison of costs and increases by the three accounting funds, general, and general food service and grants and demonstrate that as expected, the major changes are in the operating budget. Please note that the grant expenditure is also offset by the additional revenues expected in income from the Lawrence Spalding Fund. The food service will also hopefully be fully offset by revenue this year. There are several proposed staffing changes for FY23. As noted earlier with the enrollment and class size discussion, there is an additional teacher being proposed to be added due to projected enrollment and to maintain the team model at AMS. Also, in order to address the social and emotional well-being of students, the school psychologist that is currently employed at Clark Wilkins is being maintained. This position is currently funded by the IDA grant, but due to program requirements, will now need to be funded out of the general fund. Based on an increased need, a .6 speech pathologist is also being added. Also based on increased need and to promote the health of our students, a .375 health assistant is being requested. The state of our facilities in terms of maintenance and cleanliness has taken on new meaning over the last two years. An additional facilities technician is therefore being requested for Clark Wilkins. There's also a long-term staffing plan that will be highlighted on the next slide. Please note that the teacher, health assistant and facilities technician are not included in the, in the default, but this speech school or the school psychologist and pathologist are special education positions and are therefore included in the default calculation. Long-term facilities planning. So we're looking to add one facilities technician at Clark Wilkins next year and an additional facilities technician at AMS in FY24. Other positions will remain unchanged. We also have a long-term learning specialist plan that we wanted to bring up tonight. A learning specialist is a special educator who case manages, but also pushes into classrooms to co-teach to address the increasing needs in our student population. We're looking to potentially increase staffing in this area. Our plan is to hold steady for FY23, add one learning specialist at AMS in FY24 and an additional staff member in FY25, so as to have two per grade level and also to add one learning specialist at Clark Wilkins in FY24. And this slide provides a final comparison of appropriations, including the expendable trust fund for maintenance and capital needs. For FY22, the expendable trust request was $500,000 and the funding request in accordance with the capital needs analysis for FY23 is $650,000. And finally, for additional consideration throughout the budget process, the SEU 39 budget has not been completed, so the amount as an appropriation is an estimate. Health and dental insurance, looking to get the guaranteed maximum rate this month. Hopefully, maybe later this week. AEA retirement notification will happen in November. We also want to engage the board in a discussion on special services funding, looking at how we want to address that. Do we want to look at the capital, the capital needs that is existing? Potentially look at adding a contingency or increasing the budget? We are having increased costs in this area and think it's important that we have a discussion at the board level at this time. Also want to make sure to highlight the long-term facilities technician staffing plan to maintain cleaning level standards. Also discuss the learning specialist plan. And also, all, we all need to be very cognizant of the school construction bond project that is being worked on by JFAC. And that concludes my presentation. I know there's a lot of information in there. The Google Doc budget file is ready to be shared out to all of you, so I'll take any questions.
Okay, I will open the floor for questions. We will not be voting on anything tonight, just so everybody knows that it's just the very first look that we've had at this. And over the course of the next, what is it, four months or so, up until public hearing and deliberative in the new year, we'll be working on things, asking questions, fine tuning things, having separate meetings during the week for focusing on the AMS budget or Clark Wilkins or facilities, every really budget category that we have in there, special services as well. So we'll be doing all of that in the coming weeks and months. So if we have a short conversation tonight, it's certainly not us just glossing over this topic, which is one of the most important things, if not the most important thing that we do every year. So with that said, I will open the floor for questions and Beth has her hand raised.
Because I know we're going to be going through the rest of it, what is this special services funding plan that we need to discuss? Like, obviously not in a lot more detail, but also when do we plan on discussing and coming to a decision on how to do this? Because that's the main thing that we can't really answer in all, in any of our future meetings.
Yeah, I think, you know, we would certainly want to have, have Meg here to have that discussion. But there are additional needs for students who have, who require special services and some are unanticipated. So we want to make sure that we have a plan to address that. We do have the capital reserve fund, but I guess it would need to be a board decision on whether to use that, whether to look to build additional contingency or look to perhaps change the budget. In addition, I think taking a look at all of our special services resources and seeing if there are ways to reconfigure possibly, so.
So is that this year's special services budget that we need to take a look at, next year's or both?
I would say probably both. I would maybe defer to Adam on some guidance. I would maybe defer to Adam on some guidance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other questions? Victoria, do you have any questions? Victoria has her hand raised. Go ahead.
I would just like to thank you guys for tying in some of these things on this. The slide that I'm looking at says for additional review. I'm not sure if that's up in the room for you guys to see or not. Okay, so I appreciate how you're tying in, you know, cleaning level standards, individualized learning. I think when we're talking about adding specialists, you know, on a budget document, we don't always understand what the impact of those specialists will be. So to see it here even just listed as individualized learning is promising. I know we've discussed in the district our need to, to spread some of our resources to our learners who are ready for a little bit more of a push. And I assume that that is a line item tied to that. Finally, the last thing I just wanted to mention here, it's the very last thing on this presentation, the school construction bond project, but that is the topic for our ASB meeting on Thursday night. I know we have a lot of budget meetings coming up, but I think that as a board, we're probably going to have to really sit down and get to the root of what our plans are to make all of these numbers work for both our teachers, our students, and our residents here in town.
Thank you, Victoria. It certainly is a priority setting and balancing that with priorities of administration certainly as well. Carrie or Josh? I just had a couple of quick questions for you. Amy, on your teacher slide back at the beginning, you said, it looked, you said one teacher.
Yeah.
Adding to the staff, but there were two teachers listed, one had thirty-three and I think there were thirty-four at AMS. It looked like they both went up by a number, so either it was a calculation error or I just misread it. Okay, no, I did. I see it now. It was thirty. I just, I misread the number, so I apologize.
That's okay.
Thank you for the clarification there. The warrant article, you talk about the default, the five hundred thousand warrant article. You said that was coming out of the default for next year, I believe it was. It doesn't, because that's a warrant article, doesn't that not count as part of the FY twenty-two budget?
It does, but it has to be removed for the default calculation.
Even though it's a warrant article, it was technically never in, but it still has to be removed?
Amy, you included everything that was passed last year's budget to make it clear, everything the voters passed last year that affected our taxes.
Yeah, I could have just put the operating budget up there and not included the warrant article, but it would have had the same effect.
That's fine. I just want to understand where I wasn't misunderstanding.
No.
And then do we have a brief description of what the learning specialists do? It looks like we're going to include that, but it's not a secret. It's probably by multiple. Those are the questions that I initially had. Anything further, Victoria?
I'm all set.
Yeah, I'm just looking here. Amy just sent over the form. The question submission form, what is the timeline? Is it open tonight? When does it go live and when does it close down?
It can open tonight.
I don't think that's a great way to ask questions. Really interesting questions. And when is it going to shut down?
So my understanding, the process is it shuts down once Ways and Means has had their opportunity to do their review and we responded.
Amy, do you have off the top of your head when that first, or any of our Ways and Means members have that off the top of your head, when that, when that time will be? I assume they're getting the spreadsheet tonight, correct?
Yep.
I just don't have that easily accessible, Amy. Sorry, I should have had that.
That's okay. You want to know when their meetings start or?
Yeah, just.
In the end.
Yeah, I guess when the meetings start and if one of them has it, that's.
Yeah, their meetings.
We were asked to have our feedback due by ten point nine. But that's, you know, it's supposed to get me final feedback, so I don't know. And that's after, that's a day after your second workshop. So, you know, in terms of if you're talking about when we should stop submitting questions into the forums so that it's not enough for feedback and then for us to feed that feedback. I definitely think it needs to be about before the twenty-nine. You know, last year we semi-closed out before we were in the committee meetings. Yeah, you know, but that was a kind of an informal, hey, get all your questions in by. And then we still all continued to ask questions after and put it in so everybody could see.
Yep.
So I don't know if there's a date we want that for.
Yeah. All right. How about I, I'll take a look at the budget calendar and come up with a date and let everybody know. How's that?
Yeah, I think that's fair. It makes it, whatever's the easiest for you to be able to handle those and get those questions out.
Yep.
Because I believe we want the questions, the responses in by the time we start the actual subcommittee meetings or at least that week of October eleventh. Yeah.
Yeah.
The week of, because that'll be next week, isn't it?
I think it was, yeah, I think it was two days before the meeting, like two days before. But because it starts then, was when we asked to have them locked down, just so that they had two days to respond.
I think that's fair.
Before the meeting.
I think let's focus on the committee meetings that are right away first. So I know Ways and Means, excuse me, the, I think it's Specials and Transportation are on the twelfth, starting at seven thirty. The SNS, I'm drawing a blank on the.
School Nutrition Service.
Thank you. There we go. That's what I thought it was. So we'll have those starting on the twelfth, so I'd say let's focus on those as the priority, just to get them in. So because those are the most pressing ones and then we can go down the line and progress from there. Any other board comments on the timeline? All right. So if there are no more questions, let me check in with Victoria. We are all set there. And Adam, we do not have a non-public tonight, correct?
We have a non-vision seat, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to make it non-public.
Yeah, I think we should go into non-public. We'll go into non-public, so I will take a motion to go into non-public tonight.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Josh, second. Roll call vote, starting with Victoria.
Praise CS.
Conklin, yes.
Kuzma, yes.
Gothier, yes. We are officially in non-public at seven oh one. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.